Okay, we're to the point of the comments on the agenda items as usual. You know, we usually offer any comments at the time of the event that you can get out of today. Or if before we even start proposing the topics, because doing that in your mind, we can say like now. There's your first session and then we'll have one at the end of the talk. Okay, CNN, we're gonna move right on. Number one is building and zoning, the report from Jason. We all have that report from Jason, any questions on that report? Jason said he had nothing specific for us this morning, so there was no need for him to attend. Everybody good with that, boys? The Marina report. Once again, we did receive that from Ross, and we all got it. It looks like it's within a stone's throw from here to here. I guess when you look at the year to date, that sales. The Parma Spark, the sports area markers were removed and stored in the Marina, bottom of that boat removed, those are stored. Or the Marina handicap beach mat removed, stored in Marina, all boats are out of the Marina, all boats have been moved from the water. And dock removal scheduled for October fourth. And maybe the fifth, if it's necessary. So basically, all the winterization gets wrapped up, the seasonal employees are done on October fifteenth. So. And that's all. Anybody else question on that? Ross had those specific asks at all when I talked to him, met with him? I had asked to meet with him again sometime, you know, at the end of October or whatever there's. So we can start taking a look at the budget for next year for expense that we'll begin to tackle. Is that very good out there?
Well, I was just gonna comment, you know, the two thousand twenty-five, by the fact that we got to the end of the year. It was almost identical, the all roads to the one four.
Yep.
Because they had a slow start for the spring, as they did. But, you know, from an internal standpoint, the accounting changed over. They weren't properly using that closure system, so they had good reporting. This year, and we'll be sending out the annual slip bills. This next week or this week yet. For next March, so everybody's gonna get their bills way in advance, the opportunity to pay. And if they don't pay by March first, then. The F A S fine or the lose or slip.
Yep.
The.
For those of you out there, we just kind of changed a little bit of the operation. Was a part-time person that was coming in mid-winter and getting where it is trying to get. You know, those letters out and whatever, so. So the accounts receivable, the township and Trader Anderson office agreed to pick that up. So we can get the letters out as set, we're not changing any landmark dates or anything. But it's just a little bit more efficient operation than it is. Any other comments on the Marina report? I said I've got no complaints on that, which is kind of, it was good to see. Yep. All right, so we're now up. We have anybody on Zoom at all?
Just me.
That's right.
Just me.
Oh, you're doing it a different fashion, right? Okay, just you. All right, very good. So just for comments on the, we're sorry, we're a little bit late with you today, it's a bit difficult, it's a little bit of a morning. Getting the microphones to connect. We are on number three, which includes the problem, the Moses didn't want to support it. He also has a thought to thank us that they reported in action. Or your sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
Do I jump to number six, the highlighted area there of our report? This month, I held interviews for the vacant dependent position that we have. And I want to thank Trader Ranch and trustee Austin for taking in that and getting part of that process. And with your guys' recommendation, Jonah Schubi, I've operated my initial employment and he's accepted it. There's just a couple of things adding that additional offer. But as far as physical and drug testing, which they already made the appointment to do that for next week. Continue to work on the background check right now, and then obviously need the board's approval for that also. Then there's some amples paperwork to sell that we have to fill out with that also. So with that being said, what about to get the boards? Or get that on for the agenda for the next board meeting?
So we want a motion to hire Jonah Schubi effective November third?
Yep, November third will be a start date, you want some time to move. Give us a player right now, can hire. Help them all, sure, wanting to give them at least four days.
Right.
Yeah. So he thought that way, he was especially very one, said that you need to run big. Get along, bang it. They're in a little bit of a position right now with some people up on the seven A and stuff, so. We want to talk about, so we worked on that November third date. Worked good for us and him, I think, and.
So pending, or pending. The usual.
Yeah.
Background for legal drug test?
Physical drug test background, board approval, then the some amples paperwork on our, and then we have to, we'll all satisfy that.
Okay.
Um, just a little bit on Jonah, I mean, I think most people know him, he worked for Garris for, I think, nine years. Before he departed, went to share the art, before, I think roughly eleven, twelve years, so. He has, you know, twenty-three years of hard working experience. And I think with the oral panel with recommendation, I think we have a good team moving forward and we're excited to get him back and move on. And then also we have Dylan graduating the academy in December, so. He'll go on MTO for March or April and will be full of staff, so. Better position than we were in eight or nine months ago.
And so with.
Thank you for that, so. And then, any questions on that?
You want to start?
Okay, I'll have you jump to number eleven, the other highlighted area there. With this summer being one of the busiest that we've seen in, you know, quite some time. Myself and even Supervisor Hill noticed down at the intersection of North Market Road, East Second Lake Drive, you know, Nibbles and. State Park Clickers, that area. Very busy congestion in a busy summertime months. And with the location of the State Park Twitter store there. They had the. Their driveway entrance, and then there's that little like rock island that people can actually pull up there and park. And what I've seen personally and Supervisor Hill seeing also. Is, you know, trucks and trailers will pull up there, you know, with either a boat or an enclosed trailer. And when they park there, they want to go in the store. Obviously, they can't get their vehicles and trailers into the parking lot, so they just pull up there and park. Well, when they do that, and I've personally seen it myself, exiting the parking lot of State Park, Litter Store. It causes an obstruction of view. For traffic, you know, to safely exit that parking lot and that intersection. So I'd like for the board to. Suggest with the role commission how we did with the other temporary TCOs. A no parking temporary TCO just for in front of the store. To be year-round, and then people can park there, and then we can actually enforce it if they do park there. You know, with Nibbles right there too, we saw how busy that was, with the crowd right out of the fog line. You know, we're just trying to prevent something from happening before it does happen. So I'm requesting that the board can do that, recommendation to their board, like we did with the other ones from the Fourth of July. I think this would be the easiest way to do it other than trying to amend. The existing TCOs that are in place right now, this would be the easiest way to accomplish that. And this actually also came from a recommendation from the store owner of State Park Clicker, he had actually kind of taken his account. And I hope with them, let's see what we can do.
So that was, that was the question, and is he used to his. His. Deliveries without, you know, rapture, I mean, those, as a delivery truck parking here, are you still gonna be able to get?
I, I don't really see delivery trucks there, it's normally trucks and with bolts and stuff.
So he, he's not gonna be, he didn't come conducting the business.
No. And a delivery truck could still, I mean, they can still back into this. Parking lot, it just can't.
Pull along the road like that.
Right. The parking lot goes on around the back of the building, it doesn't, can't get pulled on back, I don't see.
Yeah, it's, um. It's not big or anything back there, so I don't know how much they can actually get back there. I know like a vehicle could get back there, it's free.
The truck couldn't do it.
Yeah, I don't think like a semi truck could do it, or.
But a semi could back into there, I don't think the trucks are gonna get the problem though.
Yeah, I, I've never seen, you know, obviously he sells alcohol there, I've never seen a. A beer truck park going down the road, falling or, you know, stuff, proud of into the store that way, you know? I think they, they normally back into the parking lot, you know, that's what I do. Yeah, and, and like I said, this, this recommendation actually came from the store owner himself. It's not the problems with the delivery trucks, it's the trucks with bolts hooked up to them and, you know.
Imagine a amber gets something, right?
So I, I attached the kind of suggestion language for that. Letter to the, to their boards, and then the markup math that they request also with that, so.
Ben talked about her ideas about what to do with that whole four mile right there, from Nibbles, from. East of Nibbles even. That is the, like the story.
No, I mean, I.
Both things.
Yeah, I've had this in approach me, they would need to put a stoplight there and be pretty hard to hit stoplight or something there for, you know, two or three months out of the year.
And you'll never get me.
No, that's why.
But I thought at one point we had a conversation with the elder in Nibbles about. Operating solution.
They did, and they refused to meet with Chief Wyszynski or myself or both of us. Or suggestions they, they were receptive. And said they were gonna take care of the problem on their own, and we can't force ourselves upon them.
But I always took it when I spoke with them, that they were almost kind of insulted that we were trying to help them. And that they kind of let it go and then do it on their own, so considering what happened down the road, I. There's a lot of soft targets standing out there, and that's.
Well, right after that occurred, that's when I approached them to. Try to come up with a solution, and they, we had getting everything set up and I was. Being prepared for the meeting, and that's when they approached me and said that they, they'll be a local, I know, or something coming through there, well, well, yeah. Watch because of people walking across and what all the property of. They had no way of wet correction coming, but somebody bought a town, they don't know the whole thing there. Right, well, we literally had funding arranged to pay for the solution, if you will, there. From a nonprofit, and it wasn't met with. Just, what's the speed limit there?
Forty-nine.
Would the process be to. Investigate that to get the speed. Slow it down, would that do any good, help with that?
But I, I don't think that would do any good. The, so, so you know, the process is a speed study has to be done. And as we've seen before, they normally do those speed studies when it's not the busy time of the summer. So the numbers are screwed.
Well, I have no problem with that, I'm the. With number three.
No problem, I'll get, I'll draft up a foot motion off with others, and. Then we, we can take care of that too, then I can get it started to move, because that's very slowly in the process.
Yeah, they, I mean, basically the no parking starts just after the store there. And then from there back to the south state is where, so that whole area can park legally. So it's just, I mean, really just needs one sign, we have the beginning of that parking lot. To prevent that, and then they can sell off park, you know, for Nibbles and, you know, on other side of the road and stuff for that. Any other questions, Tim?
I, I don't, I don't have any, it's just a bad situation back there. All, all day from there.
Oh, you got the bill, you got the prayer. Worked on it in the past. I mean, it's kind of surprised you're hoping best that it's that hill used to be a lot. Bigger, but they lowered it down and.
And again, the upper center is the old reason of South End of Play City Park, that's the upper center of the issue. And it just pushes it, you can put part of it down, but you just keep pushing, we saw that issue, we pushed it down in the month. Martin, you want to add that to handle that for long when it, you know, gets involved in the. You know, Dollar General parking, Blackman Airpark, and then it goes down to the next subdivision down there, and it's. It's just, you know.
Well, it's always been no parking there, and we just kind of extended it, and people are starting to not park in there, like they shouldn't be, so.
Well, we have to do what we have to do, I mean. You know, quite literally put it, I'm sure that, you know, even on Nibbles basis, they're. That well, it's gotta be sixty-six foot, thirty-three foot, you went towards the Nibbles. Uh, area there, you would be. It was really uptight there, and you could cause.
Yeah, they don't, I'm not so sure, yeah, I mean, I.
You don't want to be unkind to your residents, no, but I would say about it, you know, of course. It's a structural problem. I'll, I'll, I'll work and draft up the language there with the chief, there's his letter that he gave, so we. We have to request that as well, with the authorized request. Do, do work with the road commission to do that, to meet that, so I'll go look on that. Yep, they're good.
That's all I had for board actions, take on for the board meeting, but is anyone having any question on the rest of the reports? You don't?
Yeah, great, there is, there is all people.
I mean, you can see we're busy, we're, we're long and. There's some time, so.
Yep. As you wish. Thank you for your work. Thank you. Well, we, uh, number four, fire EMS, uh, Chief Gilliam, I see you out there in the audience. Anything for us that you might need? Hey, perfect, you all, we're gonna send any questions on our regular report. Uh, for the launch, um, anything?
Not good.
Okay, okay. We'll move right on. Uh, so we find blew a dissolution update, uh, there's obviously some movement, as you all may have read in the old newspapers. Um, they, and the family, they did need this little board, and they go to agree to a formula for disbursement. Not sure it's the whole account, uh, don't know whether there's a small amount left in the account. Uh, the, the goal was a zero balance, um, and then that would cycle a lot of sixty-day piece with, uh. You know, for cash effects. Uh, and then the board is very clear on its path forward to the dissolution, continued dissolution, so. I, I think we're, we're, we're moving on the right track. And I, I am not even going to wait, I don't have any information on whether the checks were actually mailed out by any part of that. I asked yes yesterday, and for instance, what's on? And. I know Chairman Burnwell did not know they asked him to make a question, whether they had them. I'm sure I would, I'd feel. I'm sure you told me they were sent.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, at that meeting, obviously, they agreed finally on a letter that said, you whipped it, copy, but they haven't asked people. To expedite cashing checks to October thirty-first, which would, you know, hopefully take that. And then there's another piece coming up. And I believe they're going to a meeting to talk about it, I sent it to the board members. Uh, their insurance with the mission that participates when it expires on October twenty-seventh. And so there's an invoice that came in if they wish to continue that, so I would assume that would be the topic of the next discussion. I don't believe they have money in there to pay for that. And I'm not sure about the wisdom of continuing it to begin with, so. Um, that's the update that I have so far with, with. Uh, anybody else, you don't want to make any comments about it?
I have, I offered a solution to you the other day about how to close it up too, in case those checks don't clear.
Can you make that public, or?
Yeah, please, so let's say that, uh. And it's normal when you have small checks that people put them under dresser door and don't take them with it. And I don't want to have to delay the closure of that account, so what we could do is, when that sixty days is up. If there is anything left in there, we have a trust account, if the township. They could close the account, so it's done, if somebody decides they want to present their check. After that, for some reason, they, you know, we could potentially honor it, but if that gets the money out of that account. Into the trust account, and then it could be whatever. Hundred dollars or two hundred dollars is left could be dispersed however way they want, but it's out of that. That organization will be officially closed, and the account will be officially closed. So.
And you made that.
I've talked to them about that, I haven't seen that.
As we move forward here, they may need some help in matters and. You know, whatever's left, obviously, is Lion Township's or. Ours or.
Our way, this person, I didn't want it, but that's what the trust account set, so it's ready to hold money to third parties.
And I, I had heard a figure of two hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And, and I, I.
Or they just disperse it, you know, all monies can, they actually dash, they disperse it, that's good.
That's cool, okay, exactly, so. We're just looking to make sure that they get that, that, that last eye and nodded and teed off, so.
Very good. And once that's done, we're satisfied that that's done, have we? Doctorate to.
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously you gotta close the account, my understanding, and then we'll, uh, the two things. That I sent you yesterday from our attorney force funds, we'll have a couple of brief resolutions to do. Um, and, and one, we'll be removing our board members, um, and off the board. Uh, you back this process up, and the second is, we have to do a resolution to, on the dissolution to. Dispense the articles, uh, and that, so. Um, I'll just wait and see, I think you're about sixty days from that, looking maybe hopefully by December actually having that accomplished. And maybe in December, somewhere in that, I hope.
Lion has the exact same thing to give.
Yeah, they, they, yes, that would be, you know, with my understanding from our attorney, it was that, you know, they agreed to work together on that. Their attorney, our attorney, on that piece, once the zero balance was achieved. And the other items, and they have done all of their other items when you get it replaced. So. Now you know what I know, as they say, which is a lot. Okay, on to, anybody in the audience about that?
Just wanted to pop up the checks that, some of the, sorry.
Well, you gotta come up, uh, if you will, again, identify, turn the light on, sort of people. Okay, so just folks on YouTube later.
I just wanted to mention that depending on, I'm not sure who checks this, but depending on where the checks are sent. There may be some addresses where mail would get forwarded, because of the forwarding, that we can get paid by October thirty. That for so, I don't know if anybody needs to check that, we would.
Yeah, I agree, thank you for, uh, good comment, uh. Maz, come up here next day.
Morning. Um, Phil said he did mail all the checks on October first.
On October first?
October first.
Ah, very good, you make sure that's filled in, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, anything else on that? All right, there'll be a little more, I'm the parts of action, that you soon, many of you said, emailed and said you wanted to have a few work.
I, I do, because I wanted to make, um, a little bit of modifications, I sent a one-page committee report. Last week, and on the second to last bullet from the bottom. I talked about a plan to install the spinner. And then there was a plan with some details about that. I said TBD if we can use the Roscoe Village's used timbers, and that it would save us about eleven hundred dollars, so I wanted to follow on that. That, um. I'm gonna give you some updated stuff, you can use the. Uh. Used timbers from Ra-Ra, they offered them to the Irish Township. Uh, about a week or so ago, Sue Jack sent an email to Michelle, offering those. And then I got with the Great Lakes Recreation to confirm that they would install the timbers that we provided, and they said, yeah, so now I have. A reduced price from Great Lakes Recreation, because they are not going to provide the timbers, because we would use the Ra-Ra timbers. So I wanted to, um. Talk a little bit through this, what I just handed out now is a revised. Plan to purchase the spinner, and I'd like to go through the cost elements of that now, because of that change I just said. So. At the top of that, we talked quickly about, um, that we did get two quotes from Great Lakes Recreation and from Shepki Consulting, so. I, I give you these attached over here in the revised quote from Great Lakes Recreation. Takes their price down to fourteen two oh seven. If we pay for the Ra-Ra timbers at six fifty, which is what they're asking, bring this total project cost to fourteen eight fifty-seven. So. That's the recommendation of the Parks Committee. And I'm confirming too, and I think many of you know that. Uh, the Parks Committee put some requests for grant money to Roscommon Rotary and Act Now, and the total of that that we got back confirmed was sixty-two hundred dollars. So if the total project cost is fourteen eight fifty-seven, and we subtract grants of sixty-two hundred, the remaining to be paid for their five years. Parks and Rec budget is eight thousand six fifty-seven. And we have enough money to do that, if the grant funds are made available to us by February, when we want to kick off this project, beginning of next year. Then we would have enough money to go forward and do that, so I would like to. Go with this plan, you see here, this plan to purchase. And I, I guess the only, the last question is, is that next little bullet, that Great Lakes Recreation, our rough there is Steve Sharup. And he confirms that he will hold those prices. Um, until next year, when we can. Go into the thawed ground, um, and he's just requesting that I sign the. Quote, that new fourteen thousand two oh seven quote, and he will hold that for us until next year, when we want to initiate. Then he will place that order. Um. It also assumes that Garris will work with Ra-Ra to obtain and store those timbers, so I sent a note back to Michelle. Last week. Um. C C U two Mary Kay. Or, I'm sorry, Mary, no, I have a friend named Mary Kay. Um, confirming that we would like to take those timbers and asking her if. You know, who will take the role in actually securing and storing those timbers over the winter, right now they're stacked over at the metro park. So. Um, I think if the board wants to handle that, fine, if you want the Parks Committee to be involved with that, let me know. That was what I asked her last week, and I hadn't heard that phone off.
How many timbers are there?
How many timbers are there?
It's a stack of them.
There's a stack of them. Um, and I sent a picture of that stack to Great Lakes, and he said, that's probably a little bit more than you need. But she's selling them both to us for six. It'll be.
So we just need to get them moved and stored.
I think so, because I don't think Sue's gonna want them there all winter.
It's not like that they put inside, because they're poor outside, they've probably been outside for years.
Right, right, so they're just on their pavilion right now.
Are they railroad timbers, roll railroad ties, or is they?
It's, they're all, they're all plastic. There's some projects with big spikes.
I think they're like.
I think they're like ones of the black plastic ones. Oh, they're in those things.
They're not really timbers.
Yes, I, it's a bad word.
It's a big one.
So so that's the new funding solution. And the new quote and the plan for the timbers that kind of all came together in the last you know, ten weeks. So um, our target timing is to hold the order as we have it with Great Lakes Recreation, but actually initiate it in like February or March, and then it takes about two months to create the piece and ship the piece. So that we could be putting it in in April or May one, the spring comes in twenty six. And then I have a little picture there of where it would be put in this current.
The chair, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, cuz I, I did not run a budget to actual for September, I think we just month that looks like. I'm just, yeah, I'm just kind of, are you suggesting that this come out of this year's budget?
Yes, it's um I'm just showing you uh
I've seen this, but I just wanna see what we got.
Okay, so this is, this is estimates, but I reveal that I know that being distributed to the park um allows me to have about five, it looks like there's about eleven thousand left. If we add that sixty two hundred, if we grant for next year, it will be seventeen thousand. It allows us to pay for this. We have about twenty seven, nobody worked over. Just doing parts budget.
We probably have to amend the budget. I know what you've got, but what we've got is the leftovers, something that we are running out. The numbers will probably be the same, but like we probably have to raise an amendment that it accommodates the new money. Revenues and accommodate the new expenditures. That sixty two hundred is not in our budget.
That is correct.
And I can, you know, I won't be here for a while.
What's our, what's our time? I, I know you're explaining, you know, if you can sign the quote, you can feel all right. Um, which essentially it doesn't really matter. We're citing something in the case where, where not like it's uh, last week, I can't even find it in February, which we're near, I don't think we might, but um, and of course, as you see, we're one more member short today. Um, and so I, are you asking for something for Tuesday night or approvals or um, next month or at a special if we were to have one? Or something like that, whether you're or it's your
I would like to move forward as soon as time to allow me to sign that that quotation from Great Lakes Recreation. I physically am not going to be there after the twenty fifth, but it's something that I could print in some if, if, if I'm allowed to sign, otherwise you guys can sign it. But I would just like to move forward to solve it. If it had to wait till next month, which I just don't understand why it would have to, but if it has to, it's really not upsetting.
Well, I miss it one. No, she, she has an interest in the product sadly. I, I, I don't wanna, I would, I'm not sure I would want to do something today uh, without her any quite things of this peace. Um, and uh, but I, that's just me. I don't know how the rest of the board is.
I'll see.
Will, will Michelle be here on Tuesday?
She'll be here on the fourteenth. That's our, we have, we have, we have a Tuesdays, we're not next week Tuesday.
Right.
This is that weird month that it's October, fourth Thursday.
Right.
Way out. I would say there's plenty of time for you to get with her if she has questions and wanted to. If we have questions with her, yes, you can check out. And, and, and if everything satisfies, settles in that fashion, then we can, we can do something with a motion on.
And I can draft the proposal's budget amount that doesn't have to be immediately, but um, cuz I won't be here Tuesday. So
Well, you won't be here Tuesday, the fourth night.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll be here next Tuesday, when I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
I tried it with my vacation around that, but you guys moved the date. So uh, yeah, I, I could do that. Um, but you're talking about installing it and after March thirty first. And paying for it before March thirty first or?
I think I would order it in February or March, you'd invoice at that point, and then it would go into your invoice.
I'm, we, we spend the money.
That's why we're targeting this year.
Cuz as we progress in this meeting, we're gonna discuss some of the things that are gonna affect your budget.
When does Michelle come back into town? I'll follow up on this email that I sent her last week to confirm that she's gonna
I'm gonna put this over here so that if a motion is necessary to draft for the fourteenth, uh, we can hit that done. And basically what you're doing is requesting that you have, from the authorization for or you to sign the quote, quotation for Great Lakes Recreation.
Right.
Authorized by the board, obviously.
So how will we know if that's meeting? You're gonna, somebody's gonna get with Michelle to find out if or you are gonna make a resolution to do that on the fourteenth. Or a motion, whatever.
Listen, I, I see no reason why we can't have the motion, um, you know, once we get all the the inner workings together um here and uh I just don't want to do meetings. Um, I'd like you to have some conversations with us uh, about, about it. Um
This sixty two hundred dollar grant that's pending or is it?
It's been granted.
It's been granted, they just wait.
Both of them have been granted and I told them all that um, we are now going to proceed with the project until the spring is over.
I saw a letter from Rover again. There's, there's definitely
Yeah, and
Should have money.
I acknowledge. More to do with that.
Right, and so that's end to his name. You can let me know which way it wants to go.
No, this is a very open, you know, by person. When does our most part follows up for the winner? I've been waiting to shut that down. It, it's kind of a movement.
Yes.
Uh, every year, depending on anymore, and whatever, uh, but usually when looking at historic history, well, not those. Um, when they shut past and stuff, they start taking stuff off and roll them off.
So we won't.
There is absolutely nothing I'd record for a hard date.
And I'm just curious, we will be encouraging on cost for operations or whatever. Jill's cleaning up and all and
Well, there's still the anti-sweat tanks that we live in from.
Okay, you did have.
There is a name on this there. But it falls within what she would think of the EDCS. It falls within uh her calculations. I have no problem with her calculations of the nature. Um, that you, you, you sent the email off. Um, and, and there will seem to be, then it seemed to be some potential issues uh, at that point, uh, they're earlier this week, um, so. And I, I know that I'm, I'm
I'm just trying to look for a financial, like what's, what to expect between now and you know, next March from there.
Yeah, well, I think that you'll probably, you know, cover those, but that's absolutely, uh, further down the line, you start talking about number ten, then and they'll, you know, that's, you're probably talking next year's budget or some discussion. Not, not this year's. We decide the knee year of this. Just thoughts. Yeah, I have that down for, you know, an addition here if you will, and um
You asked the lady.
We can go from there.
Great, and the last thing I wanted to do is review this. Brian, this is a, a quote from when I did reach out to them in June
Yes.
To give a quote here, so if you have a copy of this.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna meet with Josh and he's gonna rig in the tree so that he and I are very clear and then he'll get you know, with you to coordinate the whole thing.
Yeah, I, I, we have a lot of stuff around here that can't be cut until the fall. He's he would prefer that is, you know, in the, in the real late October to get by DVD and our uh, so good, I won't, and then I am not going to meet with him on that site. You will have met with him and get what you want and satisfy, which is in that, uh and then I'll meet with him on well, I already had actually in the spring, the foundation, they're mostly hooked, so we can't do the job, so.
And, and that particular amount there.
Yes.
I have already included.
Yep. Okay, very good.
All right.
Absolutely. Thank you. Seven Jim, Health and Higgins Lake, thank you for the the report, uh, and I'm just letting you take.
I um, normally would have had this in a little bit earlier, but the, we changed the the, the way, the timing that we were, that was requesting reports from the individual committees. Um, now we're, we're asking them to submit to single report rather than the two that we had to do before. A single report at the end of, by the end of the month, which, which I got yesterday. So that's why this is not on your desk um, until today. I'm glad to go through it a little bit and spend some time. How else?
I think, well, I think you should give us a highlight, I think that's okay.
The, the um, steering committee met on the sixteenth and uh, there's a couple of things we discussed. One was the Higgins Lake Water Shed Management Plan came up. And that has been, that is a big effort. I don't, I didn't, I didn't realize it until I got that's a big effort to, to uh, it was put together in two thousand uh two and then revised in two thousand seven. So it's almost twenty years that it's, since it's been updated. There was a grand opportunity to maybe get some funds to update it again, but the turnaround time was very short, uh, I mean, weeks. And there's no way we've been able to put that together. So we've gotta, gotta get the items, keep track of for going into next year. The funds will likely be available again, so that Higgins Lake Water Shed Management Plan will be on the steering committee's radar and try to figure out who's best equipped to do that. It, it dovetails very nicely with everything that the help Higgins Lake is doing. So we wanna see about doing that. There was also an invasive species grant that the Higgins Lake Foundation is, is more equipped to deal with. And we talked with the folks at the foundation and uh, would just sort of let them run with it and, and they'll let us know if there's anything we can do to, to help. It's, it's right up their alley, the, all the invasive species, where's this going on? We uh discussed the topic of transparency at the at the uh, Health of Higgins Lake and tried to get everybody on the same page of where we've been and where the steering committee fits in in relationship to the township board as a department, if you will. And is uh, subject to when it's uh, being recorded up through the board. And the committees are, the subcommittees are then reporting to, to do the, we went through that exercise again. We had, like I said, we had an activity report and a uh, report to the steering committee that was trying to get the thing off the ground is to how to understand what, that keep up on what the various committees were doing. And we merged that into a single report, like I said, not at the end of the month. Simple uh, highlights from each of the subcommittees, who said, here's, here's what we're working on and here's what the future looks like. With those, the uh, the science committee uh, had a report. And picking up a couple of highlights here, they've got over thirty studies have been submitted, entered into um, their internal, their database, which they can now go through and search. Maybe not quite yet, but they're getting to the point, once those are in, they'll be able to, this will be that searchable database that we've been talking about. So they're making great progress. Um, I see Brad's in the audience. You guys found us, Brad, that he wanted to do one there, as we do, you gotta come up.
Thanks, Brad.
Sure. Uh, no, fortunately, we're, we're really happy with our, uh, our progress. I mean, um create this um this database to create this repository for reports is something we wouldn't, you know, talk about here for decades. It was nicely, I think we're we still have more stuff to include. And it also does, of course, get um, curated, meaning that we start putting keywords, we're going for stuff to make those searchable. But we're really excited about that. And now we're at the point where we are, uh, at our next meeting, um, the eighth, we will be having committee assignments and we're gonna start working on these particular projects. And we have eight committees with eight problems that we have established, that we're trying to address. Um, so the community's gonna address each of those and we've uh, decided and um determined how, how each of them are gonna progress and how they're gonna process the information, process that and ultimately they're after reporting. So going for the whole science committee and then ultimately to this. If you have another question, I'm happy to address them.
You know, I, I, I have a lot of this class, so. Uh, can you guys, the ripple effect, the news, whatever?
Yeah.
Somebody send that to me. It's something I didn't link for, link a little bit if you will, that you are, I'll address on the Health of Higgins Lake uh, piece on our website.
I'll talk to Sue, don't worry about that.
Somebody can shoot me like the, the video, um, and you are at uh, type of thing, yeah.
You can get that? I said that, I, I didn't send that to you then, or you didn't see?
It, it's been, it wouldn't work from the, from what you gave me, but try again. I mean, I, you know, I'm just trying to see, see if somebody helped. I just like, we make sure that we're having that on our public facing website.
Sure.
I'll, under the Health of Higgins Lake, so that people can see the logical progression of what's going on.
That's all.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks. All these committees have got the right level of structure to them and um, and recording and management, they all seem to be working smooth. Uh, there's, there's a lot of work getting done and in that's with people's private lives too, that uh, these are all volunteers and in the meantime, there's lots of good stuff going on, so. Uh, the communications committee has this ripple effect. Publication that they do, um or in their presence in social media, the website they're managing, there's your community outreach. Uh, I saw here they had about two hundred email addresses looking for a bunch more if they, how early they can get them. They're trying to um, giving you addresses for the mailers that go out every month. I know for one thing, there's publishing, um, from the septic committee, they're publishing clips each month about what you do and not to do with your septic, you know, that kind of public service or stuff. In the septic committee, we uh, septic committee met a couple of times last month. And we had in the uh couple of callers, Sergeant Septic and, and Scott's septic should have us to come in and give us their perception or their idea about how these inspections should go and help us as we move along with the septic ordinance, uh, what our next steps are, what is, you know, the research with them to uh, better understand um, where we need to go with the work that they do. We've, we're creating an attributes list to identify the things that we wanted to be sure happened in a potential uh, septic ordinance. And those attributes, uh, the whole committee is, is entering those attributes into uh uh a Google Docs or a Google Sheets program so that we can then consolidate those and find and get that as the basis for what the, what an ordinance will look like. An ordinance right now that we're moving, and since this report, we are working toward um, the development of an outline for an ordinance that will be sent to the steering committee, from the septic committee to the steering committee uh, to, to work on and then off to the township board, which would end up getting it back to the planning commission to spend time with and, and refine it and get it ready to go. That's gonna take some time, no doubt, but um, you know, we have the winner to work on it and and we're actively pursuing that now. And we're actively pursuing that now. And um IT and funding continues to manage the, or IT continues to manage the. The database that we have and the the computer side of it, making sure that. There's a place for all the reports and people are getting the reports in as they should. Their funding committee is also. At their eye on opportunities for for funding and. Grants, that sort of thing, they're out there, so they continue to to do that, we have a meeting coming up, I have a meeting coming up. Unscheduled at this point, I think next week with some Eagle folks on on the great, so. And um road ends have gone around to the, all of the road ends now, as of a few days ago, I believe. To all the road ends in this, in the, around the lake, including Lion Township, got all the garages. And they've gathered things like the GPS data at the end, which we didn't have before, and they've done a. Um survey, if you will, of each of the road ends to update the. The document that the road commission had done. And that information, I think, is sent by the first of November, the middle of November, they expect to have that uh. That finished up, so that's the activity from last month for the.
Thank you, group. Any other questions? Audience, thanks. Okay, that's it, thank you. You know, fantastic, yeah. Okay, so then we're on to uh the short term rental ordinance discussion, and basically, I'll pass it to you forward. Uh we, Jimmy Anderson and myself met with our attorney, uh it's, we not have that. That total review done yet at the attorney's office, so. Uh something caught the attention that everybody knows about, uh that hadn't been done in a. You know, time period window, which is the, I was gonna cover board comments, but which was the. Filing of our township's appeal to the special assessment discipline level. Control structure on our at large. Um proposed assessment by the county then, so. Uh he has, that occupied an incredible amount of time and about a twelve foot table, four foot wide for the paper. Um and I did receive uh yesterday, late yesterday afternoon. Uh the documents and the the filing of such documents have been done. Uh he is continuing to work on our, the brief end of our. Our presentation for the, when it is appropriate for the workshop. So unfortunately, short term rental ordinance has taken the backseat a little bit there. Um and once again, it gives us time to review things that we've had. Um and in our efforts to get something solid, to bring back for again. Uh I'll say it again, we are committed, although not required, we are committed. To having a public hearing on a document. Uh that doesn't mean that that's the one that's sailed through, it means that'll be another opportunity to publish the thing. Be get it, questions, criticisms, comments. Board members since then have had um some thoughts. Um as you, every time you look at this and or you get. You know, what's going on over here to point eight or point B, it makes you think about what you already have down at the center and. Um I I I don't myself, I I know it's a big Macilla in our community. Um and but I just like to make sure we're taking good, healthy steps and looks at it. It's never gonna be perfect, um and as I've explained to our board, um I am very much realistic and. And I. I think it could be gets in both ways on this, so I just think we all have to be aware of that and be aware, we want to make sure that our best act moves forward. Um is. Is what we want it to be, because we're gonna have to stand for it if we enact it, so. Anyways, wish I had more, but we'll see, we'll. We'll try that now, but gets bumped up to the next level of importance for our attorney, so. Uh once we can get his his uh. Get this sad filing and and thing behind, we don't know how that's gonna play out yet in court, we don't know. Time frame, we don't know anything on that, and. Uh board members, any questions uh on that? Uh audience, you have any questions, we will continue to be. Um very vocal about the process. Uh so that people understand that, you know, transparency is great, I love to be transparent, but transparency is truly what comes out of. The process, so let's keep, we'll keep you informed of the process. And then in the end, no one will claim you weren't transparent, okay?
I have a question, question on Zoom.
Uh I'm on nothing, um.
No questions on Zoom.
You got something somewhere?
Yeah. Question on.
Can you bring him up?
Uh yeah. Yep, I'm here. Hello.
You can hear us, we're trying to get you available.
Yeah, I can hear you, but.
Okay, we're faintly hearing you, but we'll we'll give it a shot, go ahead, uh give us.
Yeah.
And and go ahead.
Yeah, Robert Janowski, I just wanna make it public that. Um is it a concern to the board with the STRs, the amount of them contributing to the septic leaching? Um you know, I I just wanna make it public and and have you guys look into it, because that's a lot more. People using, you know, the septics and leaching into the lake and wells. So I hope you could take that into consideration when you uh pick an amount of STRs you're gonna allow.
Any board members, you have any thoughts on that?
It's been discussed.
Yeah.
It's been discussed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's definitely up there, it's been, it definitely has been discussed, no question.
Okay, is there, I mean, are are we gonna be transparent to let the public know? How you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm sure at the appropriate time, once the, once we're satisfied with a document, if you will. Uh the number is still for us kind of elusive as word numbers, uh that if you permit it. What is that number going to be? And I want to hear more from public hearing, I want to hear more of those things personally, before I I get married to any numbers. That's my personal opinion. Board, do you have any other board members have anything you want to share? I mean, that's just my personal.
The study that was done by MSU and their recommendation. Was no more than two and a half percent of whatever your. Uh total available. Um approved properties is what you're, they're they're recommending, which in our case, we have thirty three hundred ninety. Improved properties in the township that equates to eighty five, if I remember it right.
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven. Um we already know that there are way more than that out there already and. A lot of them are on the lake, so as a board, we're gonna have to, once the the uh. Once the ordinance is put in place, the ordinance doesn't address the number, it addresses the the fleecing powers of enforcement. The actual number will be determined by the board by solace after that has been established. And I heard several different ideas of how to address that, and that's why I get speak. Definitively what it's gonna be, I know in my mind, I, the target is that two and a half percent. And that may be arbitrary to some people and I don't, I, but the. The consideration of how that may be affecting the lake has been discussed at both the Health of Higgins Lake. Uh the septic committee, it has also been discussed amongst the board, but. I don't know what that number is gonna be, because it's gonna take the collective of this board to decide that, so I, I know in my mind. That's the target. How we get there, do we limit the number to eighty five, when we issue these, if we issue them? Uh or do we go larger and then use a traditional regime some, I just, that part's gonna be up to this block of board to decide.
Or do you start there from the eighty five or eighty seven, so those are yet to be, I'm really interested to hear discussion. You know, there's a, there's. Really, just to clarify again on the on the process piece. Um uh what we'll, we'll add something, we'll have a public hearing, uh there'll be a starting point, if you will. Uh and then we'll hear all the comments. Uh then the board, again, the collective, uh the board will have to decide how that number is formulated for them.
But if you have a certain right, you will be required to. To make sure your septic is adequate for the uses, that part I mean.
Yeah, it's also in there, uh in that, so. But I hope that answers your question, I know you're looking to nail 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 us down and that's not in gospel, but. It really is not yet, RJ.
No, okay, okay, no, I I just, in previous meetings, you know, it was brought up at ten percent. You know, I I know it wasn't written, I know you're still talking about it, but. But that ten percent bothered me deeply, um that that's a lot, but now, you you know, now you're saying two two percent, so. I mean, I feel a little bit honored, so.
RJ, hang on, we're not saying, not the gospel, that it is two or two and a half percent. We just tell you that the studies that we've looked at in other communities. MSU has done a pretty comprehensive one, you can find it, it's on the internet. At two and a half percent in most communities was kind of a sudden, and if you, if you were going to allow. The practice of STRs to exist, period. So you can find, you know, uh you can, you you could follow anywhere from abolition of them all. To determining a number and policing those numbers. The question before the board, and the board is following, uh and it is. You do this in a police powers ordinance, which is currently what's being worked on? Or do you try and enforce this in a very cumbersome zoning piece? And I think the only thing this board is really, I think probably in concert on, um is. Over the window set it to the attorney is that police power would use for program. Uh as opposed to a very, very costly zoning uh enforcement.
Okay.
Having one person as a zoning. Administrator being way overwhelmed by the amount or number of those folks, so that's. I just want to make sure I caution you to be be very clear, be very, very accurate on that piece. So it's all I ask.
Oh, you know, yep. Okay, yeah, it's like I said, it's just a a concern, how many? And I know you're drafting it, but please consider that as a possible problem.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten percent, I I. Was that ever brought up in my brain, I can speak to that.
Yeah, okay, one was at one of the meetings, I used an article from Indiana where they had some proliferation of these. That they were targeting at down to ten percent because they had so many, they were. There was some, one community, that was never discussed as a target for this, for this township, I remember now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Um. Board members, any other comment? Any other comment out there? All right, I'm good. Uh so we'll move on to the construction board of appeals, uh. Been in contact with Jason Smalls, uh who was on it, and for some reason I, we missed each other, he left a message with our, one of our. Uh yellow officers here and leading the team, that he is interested in going ahead and filling the the two year appointment. Uh to more of the fields at the early stage time. Uh so I would uh put that in the next two days, uh next two days, and uh. Draft that like as we did uh for Dave Warden. Um and we're still looking for one more. Do you have any phones for that?
Nope. Little license required.
Well, that, the law actually does not say that on my. On my, the the law of my address does not say that around, so. I think it's prudent to have such, yes. Running for sheriff and. There you go, very similar to that, on that as well. And that would be a a two, another two year uh appointment there. Are you guys familiar with the agenda? And then number ten, um I, we, we, since I've been here, since I got here before. Twenty four. Um it has been a constant storage project in our, in our township, old storage, storage of. Trailers and the things that we have. Uh and then discussing needs uh. Going forward, I I would like to see us, if the board is interested, if not, that's fine too. Uh to not just my idea, uh to explore the needs for maybe a possible full structure with some bathrooms. Or we service a park out here with uh with porta potty. Um and I know on the parks and wrecks, that's kind of on the list, if you will. You get some solid bathrooms out here, perhaps maybe some bathrooms could be put in there uh to come on the township grounds and. Maybe meet the meet needs for the next twenty years, and so. Uh just open it to board for comments, your thoughts on that. That piece.
Well, if anybody's been in that building out there. You know why we need it. I know that started my thought, I mean, what was? When I had two boxes of records that statutorily had to put somewhere, and there was no place to put them. You know, and you know, so that I'm having to ask where. Uh keep that stuff, but the moment was, I, yeah, and then if you're out there, you've got um. Bison, whatever, I mean, there's like, you you go in there and the truck that's in there, you can't open the door. With with it, you know, parked inside hardly, and uh. So there's an opportunity here to uh. To service all the needs that we might need over the next twenty, twenty five, thirty years. You know, the. Parked record mentioned about having, wanting to do matters out there, well. If we did this building and did it properly, it could be. Bathrooms that would be available twenty four seven for the parks and rec. There'd be, you know, parking for whatever equipment we have, there'd be coat storage for. Um records and whatever else, and then there would also maybe even up, you know, Brian mentioned the idea of. Have a small hand workshop for our maintenance, because as time goes on, we made um. Our needs, if you look, we've got a lot of part time people working, making different things like cemetery and those building and the parks and rec and. And police department, maybe you, maybe at some point, you might be looking at consolidating some of that. And having somebody that can, you know, do some work out inside there. If second parts is compost piles. You know, there's regulations that are coming down the pipeline, and if we're gonna continue activity. Um and depending on whether we use a third party. Uh service, whether to to take care of that or we end up doing it in house. Uh like Lion Township, they have a front end owner that they lease, that they operate to do their own work. You know, that might be something on our radar down the road. And so um I think, I think it's prudent that we take a look at this and maybe consider. Um. Building something that sure that uh to service. Everybody's needs, one one shot, it would, uh but if I would suggest that we. Talk every department head and get their insight and get professionals to um. Help us with the site plan and the long term thought, because. I envision, this is just a, not having trucks running through this rock, this drive right here to get to the compost, maybe having. A different service drive coming in from the other way, if you don't have to change that because of state regulations, that would be a good opportunity to do that, so it would be. Necessarily just that building with a maybe a different drive and have a traffic going through here of prelude and. That sort of thing alongside this building, the next one with people walking and the parks and rec stuff, so. That's my thought. And I think we can do it um. With the money we have without trying to uh ask for. Any additional taxes or any. Outside money, I mean, grants would be nice, but on a project like this, I'm not sure how it would fit, maybe the path.
That would be like, that's great.
Bathroom, yes, that's great.
Possibly, yeah.
And is, I'm doing none of these as thought about two, but uh, I think we're gonna have a. Committee of some sort that takes a look at this and identifies the things that are that are needed and. They're required and those that are nice to have, um. Mentioned twenty-four seven, you know, there should keep five, there's a wear time bathrooms, you know, all that kind of stuff to. You know, to work through that to see what's in it and we have some data that you can give to. To actually use to develop the actual plans.
And thinking about what we need, might, you know, you may not even have a need today. But future needs and progress, it's like I said, you know, you end up. Leasing equipment to run that compost side site yourself, you're not gonna park it outside, you're probably parked. Inside the building, at my guess, and then with, you know, and Brian said you got. Maybe trailers yourself, but that's been parked elsewhere or left outside, it's probably not. Um, so um. I just. I just think this is an opportunity right now to do it and uh. If we start planning now, we could look at maybe um, putting that structure up next year.
I agree.
I think it's much needed.
So. So. On on that, um, I I guess. You know, I think our building administrator office, um, uh, I think that. The committee, two chiefs, P C, fire, um, should be there. Um, couple board members. That's that's five already. I'm more than two board members, obviously, but.
Right, that you should be one.
So we had. Uh, you you're the supervisor and you kind of got everybody's yearly. Um, I'm I'm willing to do that, uh, and I think you, uh, financial, uh, can be perfect to. So as as the board opposed to Jim and I Annalyn, at least so we say the committee anyways, to come back with some kind of recommendation, one way or another. No foregone conclusion, um, what we think might not be what we find, I don't know. Uh, so.
No, I think that's a great idea then, so because then the layout and everything. The board would have to approve anyway, right?
Yeah.
So if we had any.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't give us enough space.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec.
I have to tell you, at a personal level, um, you build a thirty by forty barn. You think all that's more than all others need, you'll fill it up.
Yeah.
It just happens, so that's a personal level. Imagine what's gonna be like the township level.
Right.
So, uh, but I think we need to consider the needs today, the needs that we potentially have. Five, ten years out and try to address those the best we can. And maybe we won't be able to accomplish. Everything we want. Is there's the wants and there's the needs.
Right.
I'd like to make sure we get the needs, wants without the, see what we can do. But I I uh. I envision I'll probably get a pretty good sized building to do it than you want. Uh, lots cheaper, you will, I I know that.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna have the, you're a twenty-six year old building already, um, and uh, and I do know that uh, from being over there. It would, it's.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've been knowing some green and organizing and making a little bit of room and things like that, but I know. When you were there, we appreciated the shed and that shed we got is really starting to fill up itself.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, I'm looking, you know, many.
First we slipped out, but.
Yeah, obviously, we need, we need space, obviously, we've tried to.
Is is there, I I I really would like to ask a neighbor, Ted, you know, maybe on it too, I don't want to get it too big, but. Uh, we got five if you include those at this point, um. But, you know, I'd like to maybe have a many uh, community, one or two member, uh, because seven would be okay. You know what I mean? Yeah, I'd like to include all a couple of communities, or listen, you know, the external has to be uh, looked at.
Even a builder.
A builder, yeah. Well, builder that does more than.
Yeah, they wouldn't be.
Uh, of some.
You mentioned everybody.
Alright, so then you guys are okay with that?
Every department's gonna be ready, honey. Well, he doesn't listen, Phil, I mean, you're, you know. As a name, does his number that was. Parks and Recs?
Oh, yeah, I, yes, absolutely, so that has to, that has to come. I don't know whether you come in as an interview and what you need or you actually have to be a member of it. Well, I just want to make sure that all, look, look, I I I have no interest in in going millage for something for. That we 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 literally, between all of us, we all have a very similar need. And I think, you know, through our capital uh, equipments and projects or wherever you choose to. To uh, to put a donation in from it, if you will, um, that. I think we can accomplish this and uh, and and with with. You know, money that have been paid and maybe some of the just, uh. You know, with with things we might have, we might have had on a, what I call want list, and this becomes a need list. Well, you know, um, we set aside money in the general fund, the last. I guess ask right now for infrastructure, you and I add infrastructure need. Uh, need that we talk about, if one way or the other is we. Will probably be addressing sometimes, so it would be the Marines as well, yes, different budget. But this will. Affect everybody's budget from what is police, fire, cemetery, parks and rec. Um, because we do this, it'll be a. Effort and we put bathrooms, it would be affecting the budget. Here, because that would be their capital. Contribution from their budget and that's the only way this is gonna work, because we're not, as you just said. I have no intention of going to the public and asking for money unless they wanna come and roll the sleeves up or tell me. But we're not, we're not gonna go to a millager class or anything like that from this project. I mean, that's how I live, but it does mean that everybody's gonna have to. Get a little move to to make it work, because what we set aside in our capital. Projects money and for the general fund is not gonna be around building, but that's when we talked about that. Initially, I was thinking about bathrooms in there. I think when Suzanne and I were having a discussion, mine mine was like, wait, it's an opportunity, you know, if you do this right. You can have the bathrooms attached to a heat, you know, at least heated in that side of the building. And and that way, if you're out there after hours, you you don't have to, you know, use a. Water body or a truck, you know, during the day, I see them coming here. So it it it's gonna be, whether you're on that committee or not, everybody's gonna have a voice in this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, one thing about those bathrooms, um, there is. Years ago, a map put out on Jenkins Lake, things like Republic Baths work. And open twenty-four hour the day and it said that the Marina's is, well, it's not, it's well, they closed it down. So having. Open bathrooms, um, kind of like. We do have them, it's just not over there, it's here.
Yes.
So it's it serves our public, our community, our residents.
Man, I don't know, maybe maybe you don't need them over from, you know, uh, this. Bar to me, just, you know, uh, because I don't know who's gonna be out here as well.
Yeah, if you're gonna need a uh, maintenance room.
Yeah, right, it's the way we talk, Brian, I was throwing ideas out, you know, getting a thing that's. It was adjacent to those. That would be a heated area.
Yeah.
The rest of it, we hold, but that's all to be determined.
Right, right, but this.
This is, yeah.
Just for now, I give, but yeah.
But I'd like to get chat organized, of course, every and all the players. And then Susan, come on up, please.
I have one question about the timing and the money. Or it's a comment, actually, um. When you talk about that this is something that you want to do next year, that's great, that's fine, there's money in your back pocket to do that. If you want any grants, that timing can't apply. Because it, okay, so if we were to apply for money, which we had talked about doing to apply for grants for bathrooms. It can't be done that fast, so I'm just saying, so whatever money that. You get from the parks and rec would have to be whatever, it's the funds that we already have. Um, or delay the building project and you can get grants. Talk about that, so if the grant cycle, you know, is it would be like submitted in February. Okay, honestly, they tell September, October, and you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, as if you're assuming state grants.
That is, that is the state grants, right, um, that's, I don't.
But there's other.
There's local monies, they're tinier.
Yeah.
Surely.
Good.
I I I I understand, but you know, my experience through the E D A is every time we take a grant, it's like a, they gonna. They gotta deal with the devil every time we be done. Now, there's some success stories, the rah rah. Is a success story, they put it to five years, we have to get. To where they're at today with ground breaking, I'm not gonna sit for five years and wait, I won't be here. You know, the uh, the building that you see downtown in Ross Common. That's attached to uh, to the river center, that's a, we need money, no grants. And we and we were able to do it cheaply because you were able to get the local uh, contractors and the local uh. Provider of materials, the seller that costs, and we were able to make some deals you couldn't do if you had a grant. And that's, so when I get all done and said, well, look at, okay, we built that building for a quarter million dollars. If we would have got a grant, it would cost us three hundred fifty thousand dollars, we got a hundred thousand on grant, wouldn't you, where'd you win? We didn't win any, you know, so. And you look at St. Helen and nothing against them, but they got a U S B A grant for the same type of building. And I don't think it was a building, no.
So you're going to tell it even worse, absolutely.
That that was a U S B A grant, boy, that building's, I don't know if it's been put up physically. It fell down to a now, it did, but so I just, you know, I I I appreciate that and I and I think there's some months out there. I robbery, one of their. First projects is robbery international, first robbery club in Chicago was public bathrooms and. In uh, downtown Chicago, and so they have a, those bathrooms that are at Wallace Park, that was a robbery club that did that with the E D A, so. I think there's, I think there's opportunities.
Right, sure. Okay.
We're aware of the kind of needs that. Okay, uh, so. Are we? What you want, what? You want a, uh, seven person or five? I think you move faster with smaller group, but you use all the, all the pieces. If you know, whether they're sitting in the, every meeting or if they're just, I think every, we have to get every department in.
That's what.
How, you know, if you want. A core group of seven, it's just, you move slower with the big contributor, that's fun. Well, we could always just ask our, you know, to. Uh, send us, uh, their needs, needs assessment. You know more what I than what I do, to get it, um, and uh, and. And do that and then that can go to the committee.
I think we're gonna end up using a professional, I think that's good, oh, sure, put some drawings together, as we get those drawings. I think they should be disseminated to everybody, so they will see it and mark them up and say, this is, you know. Lots of thoughts, so not everybody's gonna get everything they want, but at least everything's taken in consideration.
And then you have to figure out, you know, how are you, I need to work with Seth, how are you gonna? You know, each point you put of your contributions or whatever, uh, to this piece of the five and twelve, so. Uh, just. Discussion at this point.
They kind of for like a five number four and try to get somebody from the public in there.
Yep.
And whether you have the, the police and fire obviously have. Um, yep, but there's also a lot of that have input to it, the folks that run the compost site, you know, what. You know, their input is how this thing might look and the, you know, so they could be dragged into your meetings to uh. To get their input, they're gonna be on seven, ten, fifteen, maybe.
It's more than, you know, the notes here, one to free. Uh, you know, a community member, one, uh, two board members. And then.
That's something like this.
That's not zoning, but I did, I was, never thought of that, you know. And like, this, somebody's gonna have to tell you. You know, if we know it's maintenance area right now, obviously, because it's not time. The other piece of this, guys, as you hear us talk about this, isn't that, you know, we've been told, um, you know, our. Currently, we have like a five hour, um. Dust 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 storm and services like everything around here is gonna get you. Uh, cemetery takes a lot of this time, um, chip hall takes a lot of this time. Um, and um, and then we, obviously, we we pay for. You know, you, must you pay for your own custodian over there as well, um, there's various uh, other uh, places we may have to look at. Um, when when our, when our current part-time custodian retirees. Uh, look at what, you know, and perhaps a, a full-time is ultimately that. Uh, you gotta be perhaps augmented by some seasonal uh, help for what I call down the road in in the future. Um, the timing of that is gonna make us have that discussion, uh, because, I mean. It's real limited, who are you gonna find if you're in here for the, you know, the five hours or the whatever, there is, it's always hard for the police department, the way you. Not any more, ah, you know what I mean? But, alright, some bits, so I guess we'll put that together and come back to the board with more. With more information on that committee, once we kind of figure out gathering that together. And it's committee, it has no legal authority, doesn't have the authority to. To just act upon itself, it has to come back through your, uh, discussion is healthy. Uh, on the, on the, on the topic, and so we'll look forward to that. Alright, thank you, um, public comments. Hey, I've heard any public comments out there, board comments, where you go?
Um. Nope, I know the, uh, fact now is doing their Halloween thing. Is it like every year, so collecting candy. Anybody out there wants to bring some candy in for the kids? Uh, the park is, uh, closed down and things.
Jim Austin? I think I said my piece, I'm good.
When we report that taxes are, you know, deal through the team. On the downside, so we remember, we do have an issue, uh, as a fragment we're through is that. I do not know. If I get special assessments or not to go on the windows, those stuff.
Yep.
And the values that, you know, without the one, you know, I need what I have to do, so. I'm sitting on my hands on that, um. And then we're good, like I said, we'll bail off the green bills, we'll be. All the collections will come directly to our office, we won't have them going up. Some people's hands will actually be on the efficient dismemberment. The land, okay? That's it, uh, I did have a text late yesterday afternoon, uh, from uh. Jordan, well, there isn't, um, and he's supposed to text me today, maybe in the afternoon, to take a look at that pump problem over there. And he's still been chasing somebody to that to help us identify what the issue is. Uh, as it stands, the the cemetery continues to have the no water. Obviously, we're heading close to the fence, which Molop's gonna have to refer anyways, but. Um, I don't know what the task ahead is, uh, until we get that diagnosis, so. Although the immediate comment was is, what's over there now, um? So, you know, I think it's due to galvanize, you want over there, uh, with the pump pit, if you will. And of course, immediate comment from from people that we did contact are like, he is. I said, well, that's that's not up to me, but I I need to have a professional tell, give our board some real advice and uh, and figure out where to go. Um, and if it, you know, is a full well that's needed, then there's, and we might as well wait, and a budget for it, obviously. Um, after April one, uh, just my thoughts, but, um. Um, after April one, uh, just my thoughts, but, um, that way it's at least a comparable expense and not a, an emergency expense, well, there, so. Because they don't need to, they don't need to win it. Well, more to follow, I guess, uh, that's all I have, I think that's all I, I mean, there's other things sitting on my desk for projects that are completed, is upcoming, depending, uh, pretty fairly, that kind of thing, but so just a general, so. Okay, I only wish, uh, Lynn, I'm completing off for four items uh, for the board reading on the fourteenth, or motion act this, or actions.
Four.
What's that?
Four.
You got the same four, instead, uh, and, uh, so with that being said, if nobody has any spurs, pettmas, or whatever there is, uh, I would entertain a motion for adjourned at ten thirty-four.
So, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, I, the move by, uh, just the obvious, decided by Attorney Anderson, uh, in further discussion. All those favoring, saying, thank you.
Hi.
I propose the same, for comparison, thank you.